All right, seeing as we have a quorum, let us call to order this meeting of the Bloomington Common Council for Wednesday, February 7th, 2024. Will Madam Clerk please call the roll?
Sorry about that. Councilmember Flaherty?
Here.
And will you forgive me for just a moment? Okay, there we go. Zulik?
Here.
Rallo?
Here.
Ruff? Piedmont Smith?
Here.
Stasburg?
Here.
Assari?
Here.
Rosenbarger?
Here.
Rana?
We can't hear them.
Here.
And Ruff?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. I will start with our land and labor acknowledgement. We recognize that the city of Bloomington sits on native land. The city, as well as city administrative buildings, are on the traditional homelands of the Miami, Delaware, Potawatomi, and Shawnee people, and we acknowledge they are past, present, and future caretakers of this land. We also acknowledge that much of the economic progress and development in Indiana, and specifically in Bloomington, resulted from the unpaid labor and forced servitude of people of color, specifically enslaved African labor. We acknowledge that this land remains home to and a site of gathering and healing for many Indigenous and other people of color, and we commit to the work necessary to create and promote a more equitable and just Bloomington. We move forward knowing and acknowledging our rich, complicated, and sometimes painful past so that we can learn from it and create a true land of opportunity. All right, so to sum up our agenda tonight, we will have six sets of minutes for approval. Then we will move on to reports, first reports from council members, then a report from the mayor and city offices, and we have a report from the Capitol Improvement Board, and then we will have a report from Mayor Thompson. Then we will move to reports from the sidewalk committee, and then we will move to public comment on items not on the agenda. Our next part of the agenda is appointments to boards and commissions. Then we will move to legislation for first readings, because we have no legislation for second readings this evening. Under first readings, we have ordinance 2024-01 to amend Title 12 of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Streets, Sidewalks, and Storm Sewers in regard to amending various chapters to update references to the City Engineer, to update references to the Comprehensive Plan and Transportation Plan, to amend language about trees and vegetation in Chapter 12.24, and using this occasion to make typographical and chromatical corrections and updates. Then we will have a second period of public comment for items not on the agenda. We will review any matters of council schedule, and then we will adjourn. So let us move to approval of minutes.
I move that the council suspend the rules and consider the minutes listed from 2023 for approval this evening in the ordinary course of business.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to suspend the rules in order to consider minutes for meetings that took place before this council term. Are there any questions? Okay. Clerk Bolden, could you please call the roll on the motion?
Yes, before we... Oh, never mind. Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Stasburg?
Yes.
Assari?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
And Rana?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, that motion passes.
I move that the minutes from May 10th, 2023, June 14th, 2023, June 21st, 2023, January 10th of 2024, January 17th from 2024, and January 24th of 2024 be approved.
Second.
All right. There were... Oh, yes, Councilmember Stasburg?
Yeah, I have a correction actually for one of those minutes and a question for Clerk Bolden about those minutes. So is this a good time to?
Go ahead.
Do that? Okay. So it's on page 12 of my packet under the May 10th meeting. In the list of commenters, one of the names for one of the commenters is incorrect, and I did go back and review the CATS footage from this meeting, and it was a Zoom commenter. So are you... Do you want me to tell you the name? Great. So YYhan, you have it listed as WAI, WAIhan, H-A-N, and his name is actually YY, like the letter Y. It's actually initials, but that's how he introduced himself, and his last name is An, A-H-N. Yeah.
Wonderful. I'll make that correction right now.
Thank you so much.
Do you?
Thank you. And Clerk Bolden, I had emailed you two small corrections. Did you get those?
Yes, yes, we did, and did not get a chance to send them out to the council members, but the corrections involved the June 14th minutes, which included or needed to include the phrase that the clerk read the ordinance by title and synopsis. And the other one was the June 21st set of minutes that said that the synopsis and title were read, and they were not. So those two changes were made.
Thank you, Clerk Bolden.
Yes.
Any other comments?
I also have a question. So I noticed in the 2024 minutes under public comment, you just wrote the names of the people who commented, but in the 2023 ones, you kind of wrote a summary from what each person said, and I'm just wondering why that change was made. I'm not sure that, like, I've been writing down public comment myself, so I could refer back to it, but is there a specific reason why you made that change?
Yeah. It's funny that you ask that, because I was going to talk a little bit about it during my comment this evening, but when you do minutes, one of the things that's required is that we capture what the council does. It doesn't actually require that you capture everything that is said. And so we're trying to actually be more in line with actually with what's actually required in state code and Robert's Rules, which are what dictate how you get your minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions regarding this set of six minutes? For meetings that took a lot longer than six minutes? Ba-dum-bum. All right. Madam Clerk, could you please call a roll on approval of minutes?
Yes, Councilmember Zulik?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Stasburg?
Yes.
Assari?
Yes.
Ro... Rosenbarger?
Here.
Rana?
Yes.
And Flaherty?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Those minutes are approved. We will next move on to reports from council members, starting on my left. Councilmember Assari, do you have a report this evening?
No report.
Councilmember Stasburg?
No report, thank you.
Let's go to Zoom next. Councilmember Rana, do you have a report this evening?
Yes, I have a brief report. Seeing as this is my last official city council meeting, and I had intended to be there in person, and my whole family is waylaid with norovirus right now, so I'm trying to spare all of you from that, and I understand I'm missing some really great cookies and flowers in the room, so hopefully next time. So I just wanted to briefly just touch upon why I ran and what I think we've accomplished, and just thank everyone here, as well as everyone in the city who's been out there working hard. So as many of you have heard me say, I initially ran for this position because I was just really concerned about my daughter's future, but just all of the children in our city and what was happening in our state, and just worried about rights being taken away and thinking about what are the opportunities where we can build a better future at the local level. So after, over the last year and a half, I thought I was active in the community, but over the last year and a half, I've gotten to know so many more of you, and basically I think my life has been going to about two to three community or organization meetings every week for the last year and a half, and I've gotten to know so many of you and really see how we have neighbors working together to identify problems and work on solutions. And I think we're lucky to have an incredibly vibrant community that is able to do that. I'm also really proud of not only kind of meeting all of these people and being invited to share their experiences, but really being able to connect a lot of groups and people who hadn't been connected to city government to come in and start coming to our city council meetings, to come to other meetings, to come to public comment, to really participate and engage in the process, as well as just, we saw this with turnout, I was so proud of the levels of turnout that we got in District 5, especially among people who were registered to vote and sometimes voted in presidential elections but had rarely participated in municipal elections before. Those were the people that I spent the most time talking to and reaching out to and just really encouraging them to say, I know you're participating when we have presidential elections, but it's so important to be a part of what's happening in the city and the county and participate in our local elections as well. And I'm just really proud of not only the turnout levels that we got, but just the incredible response, just meeting people who, I just remember one day, meeting someone, talking to her about her issues, and she went and, and what we could do, and she went and got 20 more people to vote that day who were registered but hadn't been planning to vote for municipals and just came out and, and were there, and I got to meet this amazing group of people. And so I just hope, and I know that I think we have a really positive future in our city, and we'll have all of you here today, but also people who are working in our city in so many different ways and different capacities to really build the future that we need and deserve here. And I just wanted to say thank you for the honor and privilege of serving, and again, just a huge thank you to all the people I've talked to over the last year and a half, but also in the last couple of weeks and even today, who have just been so wonderful about expressing their support and their hopes for all the things that we can do in our city. So I will stop there, and you'll see me as soon as we're done with norovirus, which I'm hoping is very, will, you know, will escape it pretty quickly, hopefully see you at the next meeting, or at least when we, I promised you all that we'd also go out for dinner or something after a meeting. So I intend to show up and take you all out to dinner. So thank you again.
Thank you, Councilmember Rana. Councilmember Rosenbarger, do you have a report?
Thank you, I have a brief report. I am sick, so I am going to keep this brief, and if this is about, I just had a meeting the Safe Streets for All Committee met earlier this week, and I just want to put it on everyone's radar that we are all setting up for Safety Week, which is March 18th to 22nd. So that will be a big week. We don't have council that week, so I know some folks might be planning on traveling, but hopefully you'll be able to meet with the Safe Streets for All people. They had planned on coming to a council meeting, but we don't have one. I want to do, I want to talk more about it next week, and I'll remind folks about the March week again, but one thing, if you want to go look at Safe Streets for All online, so the purpose of this is to create a plan to have zero traffic fatalities in Bloomington, and the website we have is bloomington.in.gov/transportation/SS4A, and that's the number four, like Safe Streets for All, SS4A. That's all for me tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rosenbarger. Now I'll go to the other end of the dais here. Councilmember Flaherty, do you have a report?
Just a brief thank you to Councilmember Rana for your service. It's been a pleasure serving with you. I was excited when you announced your intent to run, and I'm very sad not to be able to serve with you longer, but wish you all the best with your family and some of the new career opportunities you all are exploring. So looking forward to supporting some of the priorities and the legacy you left, even in a short time in office, through your dedication and ambition in bringing new folks into government. So just thank you. That's it, thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Zulik?
I would like to second what Councilmember Flaherty said and say, Dr. Rana, we look forward to hopefully seeing you soon, and just give you all a brief update. I am working with the HAND department to hopefully, maybe soon, maybe later, but at least, at least get the conversation rolling on how we can, as a city, more aptly get information on rental availability in Bloomington. As of now, there's no solid place to find that information. It's a comprehensive list, and so I've been working with HAND to see what kind of data is available to make an accessible, comprehensive list on available rental units in Bloomington so that we can, one, protect our tenants and promote our property managers. So that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rallo?
I have no report, thank you.
All right. Councilmember Ruff?
I'll just echo what Councilmember Flaherty and Councilmembers Zulik said about Councilmember Rana. I can still refer to you as council member because you still are, right? And just regret that we won't have the opportunity to serve with you for this term, and, but, but thank you for what you've done so far, and good luck in, in Missouri, or Missoura, as some folks in Indiana say.
Thank you. I also want to wish Councilmember Rana all the best. Indiana's loss is Missouri's gain, so I'm sure she'll do great things there. I wanted to mention that last Thursday, February 1st, was a great kickoff event for Black History Month here at the city of Bloomington, and congratulate the award recipients that were announced that evening, Dr. Gloria Howell and Mr. James Sanders. And a surprise award was made to Beverly Calder Anderson, the longtime director of the Community and Family Resources Department, who is spearheading, along with her staff, probably her last Black History Month in, as an employee of the city of Bloomington. And so she was, she was celebrated. And I want to thank Shetoy Mas for all of her efforts. She's really in charge of making the events run, and she's done a great job in recent years, and I have no doubt that this month will also be a success with many events available. Please check out the city's website for those. I will have my February constituent meeting this Saturday via Zoom at 11:00 a.m., and I invite people, especially in District 1, to hop online and participate. The link can be found on the city council website, bloomington.in.gov/council. All right, let us move on to reports from the mayor and city offices, and we will start with Mr. Doug Bruce, who is the city council appointee to the Capitol Improvement Board, which has been undertaking the Convention Center expansion project. Welcome, Mr. Bruce.
Thank you. I figured I would, as a council appointment to the CIB, come and give you a kind of a rundown of the activities we've had. We've had four meetings. I've also left a copy of this with the clerk, so you can see there's an updated version of it. I think I emailed one out a couple of weeks ago. This is a more updated version, as a few things are happening next week that I wanted to make sure you were aware of as well. So yes, I am your selected, or at least the previous council, to be a member of the CIB. Our name actually is the Monroe County Capital Improvement Board of Managers. That's our legal name, I've been told. We've met four times so far. Our next meeting is next week. We have selected our officers. Our meeting, our, actually, our officers are, John Wyckard is our president, I am our vice president, Eric Spoonmore is treasurer, Joyce Poling is secretary, Jay Bear is a member, Adam Thies is a member, and Jim Silberstein is a member. So that makes up the group of seven on the CIB. We have interviewed and selected legal counsel. Really, before we could do anything, we needed someone to make sure we had bylaws, and we were wanting to make sure we didn't step out of bounds on any state requirements for noticing of meetings and on all of that, all the legal stuff that we didn't want to run afoul of. So Jim Witlatch of Bunker Robertson is our counsel, and he's proven pretty effective right off the bat, set us up with our EIN and other documents that we really need to operate. We have just, at our last meeting, retained Jeff Underwood. Many of you might be familiar with him, but he's going to be our controller. We figured somebody that knew the bonding and numbers would be effective for us, so, so Jeff was a no-brainer on that. A couple of other things. So we have set up, we have an operating budget, and it was funds created by the previous city council of, that was set aside, but we can't access those funds yet. So just in case you're wondering, we, yes, we have hired an attorney. We can't pay their invoices yet, and they're very well aware of that. And that really can't happen until the interlocal agreement is set with the county and the city. Let's see, we've also met with the architects, so this board in some iteration existed previously, and we're kind of the phoenix from the ashes, so to speak, as we try to move this project forward. And so Schmidt Associates was the architects that were hired at that time. We have no contracts right now to do anything else, again, until we get funding for that, but we did ask them to come and speak to us about, kind of bring their team to us, introduce us, to get us up to speed on what they did. You know, there were many more citizen meetings and stakeholder meetings. There's no design set in stone, so, you know, I want to be clear about that. We've, we've just met with them. We need to work forward with some contracts with them, but we at least wanted to see who the team was. We didn't, we don't feel right now that we need to go through the process of finding another architecture firm. We feel that they're very confident in the team that they brought to the table, because it includes more than just architects, civil engineers, interior designers, and, and other people that are affiliated with convention centers. With that, we also felt it was important, and we just had a presentation at our January meeting with Mike McCaffey and Talisha Kopick, and I thought I'd share with you some of what they presented to us, because again, we, we want to see the need for this convention center, and we need to see the, the data behind it. And again, we all know 2020 and, and the pandemic slowed a lot of things, and, you know, some of us were very curious on where we are now. So with that, I'll give you a few points of interest here. The current convention space works best for conferences of 200 or less attendees. Seventy percent of the business is civic, typically booking one year in advance. The conferences that we do get tend to use, utilize the entire facility. Let's see, Sunday through Thursday, economic generators, approximately 30% include overnight stays. The booking window for some of these larger events are one to three years out, and that's key, because we're kind of under the gun here to, to get some things moving with this, because we can't book anything, we can't talk to anybody about anything, and we really, that's going to be the big economic generator for this. Bloomington is the second most desirable destination in the state, but we have the smallest full-service center. Let's talk about Monroe County Convention Center lost business. In 2010 through 2017, 303 events lost. Sixty-four percent of those were due to dates not being available and size limitations. Again, the dates aren't available because we're small, and so it doesn't, we don't have a lot of room to book multi-groups at the same time. In 22, 2022 to 2023, 137 events lost, 95% were due to dates being available. Again, this is showing that the convention business is picking back up. Five percent of those were due to size limitations. Since the year 2000, Visit Bloomington has submitted more than 600 proposals to host groups in Monroe County, and more than 100 of them chose other locations due to lack of meeting space and/or hotel room and space availability. The expansion estimated economic impact, the average business traveler spends $214 a day, which they say here is conservative. So 40,000 new annual visitors a day at 8.5 million. Economic estimated impact is $13 to $18 million annually. Let's see, where we are right now, this is some of the new things that weren't on the email I originally sent. The CIB board put together a task force to look at how we move forward with speaking to the architects, going down the road of building a facility, and how, you know, none of us, this isn't our full-time job, so again, utilizing, we've got, actually, we've got a great group of people here. Adam Thies is very experienced in managing larger projects and dealing with the, how you construct these buildings. So, so he and I, and Mick Renizen at the time, were a task force to come together, and we made a recommendation that the CIB seek RFQs from interested parties for a construction manager for the project, as well as a project manager. So those have been out for a couple of weeks now, and actually, next week on Monday, we, our task force will meet, review those, and then propose to the CIB who to interview to, to move forward with those. And again, we're not signing any contracts at this time, we don't, we don't have the capability for that. So, so hopefully on Monday, our task force will, will present this to the, or come up with a recommendation and present it to the CIB for the February meeting on the 14th next week, which by the way, is at 3:00 o'clock at the Convention Center, if you'd like to come to the meeting. And then finally, kind of the last part here, we're now working with the architects, and we've, we're reviewing timelines, square foot costs for construction, land availability, and working with the RDC on that, of course, for potential sites. And then we're reviewing, and that's why we needed the importance of getting Jeff Underwood involved, because we're looking at projected bonding and costs, so we can gain a better perspective on the current costs and issues, and the size of the facility, and again, dependent upon bonding and projected costs or projected revenue from the food and beverage tax. So that kind of brings, we've only had four meetings, so that kind of brings you up to speed on what we've done and kind of where we're going. So with that, I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Bruce. I appreciate, we appreciate your presentation. Are there any questions at this time? Councilmember Flaherty?
Thank you. Thank you very much for the thorough update and for your willingness to come here and share those, share those details. I was curious if at this point you have any idea about whether the CIB would recommend or be requesting additional capital investment outside what the food and beverage tax can support, or if it's really too early to say about anything like that.
Well, I'll tell you this, so we haven't had a thorough discussion on that, but our directive, and I'm sure I, speaking again for the board, would be that we're not, we would not seek any other funding for this outside of the food and beverage tax. There may be an opportunity for, let's say, naming, you know, so there may be some ways for profit to, to look at some namings, we either, you know, look at the current convention center now, we have some rooms that are dedicated. Those would obviously be something that would be taken up with the, the county and the city before we went down that road, but I, I would say that the board would see no, you know, we're, we're going to put together a budget that meets, that works with the revenue from the food and beverage tax and the approximately $18 million that we have now currently, and we won't exceed that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Mr. Bruce? Yes, Councilmember Ruff?
Mr. Bruce, thanks very much for, for coming and giving us this update and report. When you were talking earlier about some of the data regarding, you know, potential conventions, conventions, events lost, not realized here for various reasons, space, accommodation, date availability, which I didn't realize are actually kind of tight- accommodation, date availability, which I didn't realize are actually kind of tied together. But is there any, in the convention literature that you're familiar with, if you are familiar with, is there any data or any indication, do we have any reason to suspect that some events happen purely because of the destination? In other words, is it a zero-sum game where every convention that, every event that doesn't come to Bloomington is just going to be somewhere, is just going to go somewhere else? Or is there some indication or evidence that a destination community, like we like to think of Bloomington, actually creates some demand for events that otherwise wouldn't
That's a great question, and I think part of that was answered when, and again, I'll find out, again, we're, we're working with the experts, you know, the Schmidt team had some eye-opening people on their team that, that have more data than I had questions. But I think the one that really caught me was talking about how Bloomington is the second most desirable group destination. I kind of, I want to be able to ask them, how has that come about? Is that the data? Again, all of us here would like to think that it's because of our amazing downtown, our amazing county, you know, our parks, our, the Lake Monroe, all of these amenities, university. But I want to see how they came about that data. Are they doing a survey? And I imagine that's what it is, is that the, the group that Mike belongs to, Mike McCaffey and Talisha, have probably had some surveys, and Bloomington has come to the top of the list. That's probably the data that we have. I just haven't seen it, other than, than when they came to us and gave a quick presentation.
Thanks for your play.
Any other questions for Mr. Bruce? Yes, Councilmember Rosenbarger.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bruce, for your update. It's very useful. When we talk about coming to Bloomington for the use of this convention center, where, where do we say they're coming from?
Uh, I'm trying to, where, oh, where do we say the, the guests are coming from? The?
Yeah, like, is it, are they driving, are they all driving? Is it regional? Is it sort of like from Indiana? Is it the Midwest? Are people flying in? I mean, what, I guess, who are they?
So, so that's one of the bullet points I didn't bring up, but the average, we average 460 events a year. Eighty percent of the events are repeat events. Twenty percent are new, of course. Ninety percent of the groups originated in Indiana. So that's the data, so that, that, at least on the current events that we have had, that Talisha was able to give to me. So it's mostly right now.
Okay, thank you. And they're, yeah, Indiana folks. Is there an aspiration, I guess, as to like where an expanded convention center, where people are coming from? I mean, is it still just sort of Indiana, or is it a larger region?
I, it's not a discussion we've had. I'll say that, I mean, I remember a line that Steve Howard gave years ago when he was president of the chamber here, was that, you know, he loved tourists because they come here, they spend their money, then they leave. And, and so I'm, you know, of the type that believe anybody we can bring from out of town that's bringing dollars to our town, and hopefully spending them and leaving them is a, is a great, you know, great asset. I would say if the convention center, as we go down the road, I, you know, just seeing what I know, is that having a larger space to be able to have larger groups, I think, opens the doors for us to have maybe some national groups, you know, where maybe Indianapolis is too large for them. Right now, maybe we're too small, we don't have enough hotel rooms, but hopefully adding more hotel rooms and adding a larger space where you can accommodate 600 people in one area and not shut down the whole convention center might bring those type of groups here. And so I would, I would say that we would probably see something like that. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I, it's not a question, but like, I would love for the CIB to, to just, you know, consider some sort of shuttle from the airport, because I, I find it, just like with climate change and everything, like so many people driving their own vehicles to Bloomington for conventions is like gone. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Bruce? Yes, Councilmember Stasburg.
Due to timing, I moved to extend the time for reports from mayor and city offices until 7:30 to allow time for the other reports that we have.
Two seconds. Second.
All right. I think we need a vote on that. Clerk Bolden, could you please call a roll on a vote to extend the time for this part of the agenda to 7:30?
Councilmember Rallo?
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes.
Pete Mount Smith?
Yes.
Stasburg?
Yes.
Asari?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Rana?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
And Zulik?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any final questions or comments for Mr. Bruce? Yes, Councilmember Zulik.
Has the IMU been looked at at all in terms of like their capacity on how they can hold events?
Not something that's really in our purview. I know, you know, looking at the numbers of the groups that come to our convention center, we, even with the IMU, even with French Lick, even with some of the private venues in town, you know, again, we're, we're overbooked and at capacity.
I just think that it would help answer the understanding of, you know, what different buildings have the capacity for if we were to include the university in our discussions.
Thank you. Councilmember Asari?
Super quick question. Has there been much discussion as of yet about how this space is used when it's not being used for large, small, and medium-sized conferences?
Maybe, you know, again, in four meetings, we've tried to get a lot done, and so we haven't really gotten to the, those phases, but I would say that, that we've had some comments from the public that we've duly noted. One person mentioned, just making sure that the design of the building connects people at the street level, and of course, that's, you know, I've been a downtown businessperson and involved in downtown, and my parents owned a business, so, so that's a priority for me, too. But we've had one discussion that, you know, what would happen if a pandemic is, you know, happens again, and do, do we need to think about other uses that could happen if we, if we needed it? And, and of course, these are just questions that, that came from the public that we've kept, you know, recorded, and as we get to that phase where we're actually, you know, we have an architect under contract where we're starting the design discussions again, those will come up. But you can be, rest assured, those will be, those kind of uses, those kind of thoughts will be addressed. Thank you.
Councilmember Rallo?
Thank you, Mr. Bruce. Appreciate your presentation. To follow up on Councilmember Asari's question, when we were presented this, it was a convention center, civic center. So the proposition was that the space would be available for the public, hopefully at a, at a discount, to use for events here. Has this been part of your discussion, and/or will it be?
I just noted it, so it will be, but I can't, again, we haven't had, we haven't gone that far in depth yet. We're much like, I would imagine you as a, as a new city council, just getting up to speed. We are, you know, trying to get up to speed and make sure that all of our i's are dotted and our t's are crossed.
Yeah. I'm not so new anymore, it turns out, but Mr. Renison, though, is very familiar with it, so I'm sure you can tap him. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions before we move on? Councilmember Rana?
I had a question.
Yes, please go ahead.
Thank you also for the presentation and all of this information. I was wondering if you could share an update on the inter-local agreement that you'd mentioned, or kind of where, where it is of the approvals process and what the timing might look like?
Well, I'd love to. I'll, I'll give you, the CIB's take is that that's not something that we're privy to any of those discussions. You know, that's between the city and the county, and we are a board tasked with something entirely different. Now, we depend on that agreement, but none of us on the CIB really have any information on where it's at, or, or, we know the importance of it, though, but I can't really give you any information on it.
Well, do you have a thought on the timeline that you would need it to be approved by, or anything like that that you could share? And you might not be able to, I just wanted to.
Just vaguely, I could say that it's important for it to be something that's agreed upon fairly soon. And the reason is, is that we haven't had many discussions yet on, again, the project itself, but when we had the architects, we did want to discuss with them, well, what did they see this based on, you know, the previous design they were coming up with, which was approximately 60,000 square feet? We don't know if that's, if that's still viable, or if that's affordable. We haven't had those discussions, but based on that size of a facility, we need to get something started soon, which if we did within the next month or two, then that would keep us in line for a fall, fourth quarter of 2026 opening. So, anything that we push back now is going to push that back.
Thank you so much for sharing that.
Yeah, and I can just fill in a little bit about the inter-local agreement. We expect that the county commissioners and the county council will consider it this month, and hopefully by the end of the month, it will come to us for our consideration and vote. So there have been, I believe there's, there's been a tentative agreement reached on revised language.
Fantastic.
All right. Any, any other questions, comments for Mr. Bruce? Well, we thank you very much for, for coming.
And again, I am very humbled that I stand before you as your appointment, and reach out to me, please come to one of the meetings. I'll come back to you every now and then to give you an update, especially when we have some major milestones, just to keep you informed, because then I know you guys can spread the good news to your constituents. So, thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. All right. Next, we'll go to Mayor Thompson, who is, I think, with us on Zoom and wanted to provide some updates.
I am, and I am going to stay off video because I'm not sure my internet connection is going to hold for voice and video. I wanted to first take an opportunity to send my best wishes to Councilmember Rana and your move. I know you'll have much success in Missouri, and many thanks to Doug Bruce for your expertise and volunteering on the CIB. I know having a design expert is, is key to that committee. I did want to note, while we're talking about the convention center, that Downtown Bloomington Inc. celebrated 40 years yesterday, and there was quite a celebration with a really detailed look back on how we got to the downtown that we have now, and what has been restored and preserved, and what has been built new. And it is not without great vision that those things happened, so my gratitude to, especially to the Cook Company and its employees that have, have really led the way, as well as many volunteers in our community that saved the courthouse and then kept going from there. And Isabel and I, my gratitude to Isabel for inviting me to the Broadview Neighborhood Meeting, which was Monday night. I did want to touch on that briefly. The Broadview Neighborhood is really experiencing some significant safety and security issues, especially related to the encampments that are around Switchyard right now. And so Isabel and I will remain in contact with them. I am doing some follow-up with some residents, along with members of, of the city team. I obviously want to talk about what is on everybody's mind. The showers West advisory team, as you know, met three times and came to a decision together to recommend rejecting all of the bids at showers West. And the RDC unanimously approved that recommendation on Monday night. I'm going to be setting a time in the coming weeks to hold a collaboration meeting to determine our next steps for the process of housing our police administration, as well as a path forward for utilizing showers West. And I'd like to invite all of the city council to join that meeting, participate in that meeting, so we'll be noticing that as a public meeting, and we'll also invite the members of that showers West advisory team. And we'll, I think what might be best is for us to prepare some briefing documents for everybody before that meeting, so that we can bring you up to speed with, with the data points, at least, before we have that meeting. So again, we'll notice that as a public meeting, anticipating that we'll have more than a few council members that are interested in participating, and our team will also work with Stephen Lucas to make sure it's appropriately noticed. Two more things. Crowe is coming in tomorrow. You, you may have seen that we, our administration released that salary study that was done. We have not had an opportunity to really unpack that, that salary study, and so Crowe is coming in tomorrow to do that for our, our HR and leadership staff, so that we can begin to understand the parameters and implications of the findings in that report, and, and then start to make a plan for how to implement that. And finally, also happening tomorrow, of course, is our, is our annexation hearing. So, that's happening here in town, and I plan to be in attendance in addition to our city legal team and the outside council. And I'm, of course, happy to take questions.
Thank you, Mayor Thompson, for those updates. Are there questions from council members? No questions? I'm amazed.
Doug Bruce wore them out.
Councilmember Stasburg.
I'll just say thank you for giving us that information, because I do appreciate hearing, hearing about these things, and I don't have any questions, because I feel like what you said was quite comprehensive, so I don't have anything right now, but if I think of something, I'll let you know.
Yes, I will echo Councilmember Stasburg in that we, we appreciate you coming to give us updates and look forward to more in the future. All right. Next, we will move on to an update from Clerk Nicole Bolden.
Good evening. How are you all today? Wonderful, wonderful. So, my name is Clerk Nicole Bolden. For those who may be watching and are visually impaired or blind, I am a brown-skinned black woman with my hair pulled back and ponytail and a black jacket. So, I wanted to give you some updates from the office of the city clerk. I made a very, very small slide deck, so don't worry, you're not going to get lost in it. But for boards and commissions, as of, at the start of 2024, we had 41 vacancies that the council was responsible for filling. As of today, 10 minutes from now, that should be down to 26. We had Team C that met this evening, and we are working with Teams A and B to get them scheduled, so that you can do the work of reviewing and interviewing and appointing members to this various boards and commissions. members to these various boards and commissions. I will remind all of you, or tell those who don't know, that the best we can do in the clerk's office depends on you all doing your best to collaborate with one another for scheduling. And I know it's hard, because everybody has jobs and lives and families, but we are here to help make it happen. And then moving into parking citation appeals. In 2023, we had almost 8,000 appeals. So far this year, we've had 531. We have noticed a definite uptick in parking citation appeals over the last couple of years, and I believe, based on the numbers that I was looking at, that 2023 were the highest number of appeals that we've seen since I started at the city back in 2009. So I've always told you that the number of citations that are appealed runs at about 10%. Last year, it was about 14%. So it's definitely higher. I don't know why. It could be just a matter of being fully staffed in both departments, but that's what we're seeing now. And moving on to minutes, since we had a couple of questions, I'm not going to address them in the same way, but so far, all of 2024 minutes have been submitted for approval. We will continue to do that as quickly as possible, depending on your council schedule. So when we have times where you're meeting every single week, it may slow down, so you may get a couple as a catch-up, but we're going to try and keep those updated. There's one set remaining from 2022 and 15 from 2023. I know that all of you have seen the sets that have been coming through over the last few weeks. Just to give you a little bit more context, that has been a question of staffing and medical issues. This is really the first year that we are fully staffed, and no medical issues so far. And I'm going to go ahead and knock on wood for that one, because it was not fun. And then we currently have 37 outstanding sets going back to 2000, the year 2000. I don't know if you recall, when I came in, we had almost 80, and we're slowly, slowly, slowly whittling through those. But that is not the top priority for the minutes that we're doing now. And moving on, it is Black History Month. So happy Black History Month. And while, you know, I think that Black History is something that we should be celebrating all day, every year, all year, this month in particular, the city of Bloomington's theme is Black History in Cinema. And I included a list of some of the city-sponsored Black History Month events, and I do want to stress that, because there are other events going on throughout the city, and you should attend them if you can. Most of the city events are free. The Black Market is coming up in just a week and a half, the Black History Month essay contest is coming up, the Bright Path Film Showing, and the annual Black History Month Gala. That is the only event on the list that you have to get tickets for, but they should be on sale through Buzzkirk Chumley, and I'm sure I will get a message from Shatoya Moss if I am incorrect on that, so forgive me. I also want to point out that today, February 7th, is National Black HIV and AIDS Awareness Day. And we can't end the HIV epidemic without centering the experiences of Black people living with and impacted by HIV. The Black community is disproportionately impacted by new HIV cases per year. We have 14% of the U.S. population, but 42% of the new HIV cases. There are multiple reasons for that, but it is something to be aware of, and so today is the day where we can talk about it. And I like to say that when we talk about Black History Month, we should not just be performative, but informative. So I thought it would be nice to show you a few of my picks for Black History Month. So if you are interested in reading, we have "Inciting Joy" by Ross Gay. If you'd like to watch something, there's "Stockton on My Mind," which is a wonderful documentary about a mayor in California. And if you want to listen to a podcast, I would recommend "Native Lad and Podcast" with Angela Rye, Tiffany Cross, and my friend Andrew. All of these particular choices are related to Bloomington in some way. So if you can figure out the movie, go ahead and let me know, or one of your colleagues. And so with that, that is everything. I included a QR code to the slide deck if anybody wanted to go back to those picks or had any questions to refer to, but that's what I have for you this evening, and thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Clerk Bolden. We appreciate all the help that your office provides the council with minutes and board and commission appointments. Are there any questions? Yes, Councilmember Rallo.
Thank you, Clerk Bolden. I had a question about, and I appreciate that people that are proposed to be appointed to boards and commissions now appear in our packet, and I wondered how that couldn't be, not codified per se, but could be insured. I know that you will ensure it, but in perpetuity for clerks in the future to make sure that that occurs. Is there a process that we could make sure that that?
Well, what we did this particular time around was we sent a memo to the council to be included in the packet, so there is a memo from the clerk's office with the proposed appointments. And I believe that Council President Piedmont Smith suggested to all of you that you not try to appoint on the night that you meet. So for instance, your committee that met this evening, any of your decisions would not be included in tonight's discussions about board and commission appointments. After that, I do not know how I can tell you that this is a practice that will continue after you and I are out of office, but we will continue to do so while I'm in office, and I think the council processes is something that maybe you can discuss during your special committee on council processes. And I will remind everybody there if you don't.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions for Clerk Bolden? Councilmember Stossberg?
I'm hoping that this will be fast, and maybe you don't know this off the top of your head, but what percentage of the appeals for parking tickets and things are granted?
The percentage granted? It varies per year, from year to year, and I have it sitting at my desk, and I thought about bringing the computer with me, and I did not, so I cannot answer it off the top of my head. I believe, you know what, I'm not even going to guess. I just, I don't want to do that, but I will answer that question for you. And I think for the sake of getting the information to both you and the public, I will probably drop it in the slide deck that I showed so people can refer back to it.
Cool, thanks.
Thank you. Yeah, that would be interesting. I have a quick question. Let's see if I can just make this quick and get it under the time clock here. As of today, you said we had 26 vacant seats on boards and commissions after we, if we vote to appoint the rest. In the slide deck, it says 36. Is that?
36 is the assumption. If you don't do anything from this moment forward, you'll still have 36. If you make the 10 appointments that have been suggested by the committees, you'll go down to 26.
Gotcha.
Yeah, it was, wasn't quite sure how to phrase that, but I wanted to make sure I put it in there.
Okay, we're making progress.
Making progress, yes.
All right. Any other final questions? Okay, Councilmember Rosenbarger.
Sorry, quickly, I wanted to ask, were those slides? I couldn't see the slides. It's not exactly a question, it's logistical, but Councilmember Rana, could you see the slides? Is something wrong with my Zoom? Okay. So just wondering, we didn't get to see them. And you can get tickets to the BCT for the gala, I know that.
Oh, yes. Thank you.
So the question about obtaining the slide deck, was that answered? Sorry, I didn't quite follow that.
I think she was saying they weren't able to see it on the Zoom, but yes, I'll make sure that you have another copy of it, and it's posted.
Okay. Yeah, it was emailed along with the meeting memo as well. But can we, Council Attorney Lucas, can we make that available as part of a packet addendum or somehow on our website?
Yes, we can.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Can I just say goodbye, Councilmember Rana? Thank you.
All right. Well, let us move on then to the Council Sidewalk Committee. And I think we have Councilmember Rosenbarger here to present a partial funding recommendation from that committee. Please go ahead.
Hi, yes. Thank you. Do we need to extend our time for this portion of the agenda again, or?
Oh, you're right. Oh, you are quite right, Councilmember Rosenbarger. It's for the whole reports. Oh, wait, no, 20 minutes set aside for each part.
Right, so this is.
Oh, great.
This starts a fresh 20 minutes for the sidewalk committee.
Okay.
Okay, so I was on the sidewalk committee during the last term in 20, in the 2023 year specifically. We met at the end of 2023. I will just back up and say, I planned on going through the report that is in the packet and just talking about things a little more since it is a new council. So last year, we had Councilmembers Jim Simms, myself, Susan Sandberg, and Steve Volin. I am the only one returning this year, so I opted to give this report. When we meet, we have a lot of city staff with us, and they are from many different departments, planning and transportation, engineering, utilities, parks and rec, Office of the City Clerk, and council office. So in the past, the sidewalk committee has taken many different iterations of how they do business and make recommendations to the council as a whole. Presently, what we use is a rubric that is on, starts on page 53 of our packet. And this came about in 2022, when the sidewalk committee wanted a more objective way to view the missing sidewalk links in Bloomington and make recommendations to council as to where funding should be allocated. So just reading a little from this packet, we wanted to prioritize projects objectively, and so the scope of projects eligible for review was identified by creating a map of all of the city of Bloomington maintained sidewalks that had missing, or maintained streets that had missing sidewalks. Map was created using data from the 2018 LiDAR scan, and it was updated to include sidewalk projects completed or in-design construction phase in the subsequent years. So we also weighted metrics that were developed to identify those areas from the map of missing sidewalks best suited for improvement, and the data for the development of these weighted metrics was collected from the census, the city GIS inventory, and formulas that indicate high areas of potential use and connectivity. We also reviewed criteria based on closeness, like connection with transit, population density, vehicle counts on the streets, adjacent street speeds, and then we looked at historically excluded group data, so that includes percent of resident renters, percent of BIPOC renters, and median income. So that is all taken into account by city staff when they come to our sidewalk committee meetings and recommend how the alternative transportation fund dollars be allocated by the sidewalk committee. So because we met, so last year's committee met so late in the year, we were only able to schedule one meeting, and then it was, it was decided everything would be turned over for this new council term. And we had some questions, and so we basically recommended just partially funding, some partial funding of projects that were ready to move forward, we thought, but others, we had money left over that we weren't ready to allocate yet. So on page 50, this is 55 of the packet, we are recommending two allocations for project design. And the first one is North Dunn Street, and that's the east side of the street. This is north of 17th Street. So it is at North Indiana, and it's on the side of the street where the stadium is. It's basically from that corner to a bus stop about mid-block up on North Dunn Street. This was highlighted by city staff as a place with a lot of pedestrian traffic, because a lot of students use, I think, the amenities at that corner and then walk to that bus stop, but there's only a sidewalk on the west side of the street and a no-good way to cross the street to get to that bus stop. So we allocated 30, well, we recommend to allocate $35,000 to design a sidewalk on the side, the east side of North Dunn Street to finish that connectivity. After the bus stop, you do have a sidewalk north to the bypass, so this really is just a missing segment of sidewalk that we have there. The other design that we recommend allocating dollars for, also $35,000, is on North Jefferson Street, and this would be the east or west side of the street. So North Jefferson is just to the east of Eigenman Hall, just east of campus, and it's a section of street that doesn't have a sidewalk at all, but it tends to have cars cutting through to get places, I guess, allegedly faster, and no safe space for people to walk or bike there, but a lot of pedestrian traffic. So it's a high-scoring area based on density and demand that they recommend designing for the future and deciding if that sidewalk should be on the east or west side over there. So those are the two design projects that we recommend allocating dollars for, so city staff can move forward with those. And then what we have done now for a number of years since 2020 is we have allocated $50,000 for the resident-led traffic calming project. And so that is not for a specific traffic calming, but it is for planning and transportation staff to work with city residents. There is an application project, there's an application process for that, and then each year, they award traffic calming dollars from our alternative transportation fund to residents and neighborhoods in need of traffic calming. That, those projects also have a rubric that is used, so it's equity-based in density and demand, somewhat similar to what we use for the sidewalk committee. So right now, we, the previous sidewalk committee, recommended that we allocate 120,000 of our alternative transportation fund dollars, and we have, gosh, I think the total is 330, it's a little higher up, or 350 potentially, so we would still have, okay, $336,000. So we would still have a majority of those dollars to go back to and allocate during this year. But that is where we are right now, and I'm happy to answer any questions that Councilmember has.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Rosenbarger. Are there questions regarding the sidewalk committee report and recommendation? Councilmember Stossberg?
You might not know the answer to this, and I might need to ask staff for it, but in terms of that rubric that uses adjacent street speed and adjacent street width, you know, sidewalks by their nature connect one street to another street, so which street do they use for that calculation? Or do they use both streets? Or do they, like, pick the busiest street? Or are you not sure? And that's a staff question.
Oh, it's the street that would be adjacent to the sidewalk. So it's like the street parallel to the sidewalk.
Okay, so it's not, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Councilmember Rosenbarger? Councilmember Zulich?
This is not a question, but I just want to say that stretch of sidewalk past 17th Street on Dunn really needs sidewalk, or I guess the stretch of no sidewalk needs to be dealt with, because I see students all the time walking kind of almost in the street to get to class, and it's a big safety hazard. So, thank you. Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Or Councilmember Rosenbarger, did you want to respond?
I was just going to say it's everyone, all of council.
I'm sorry, did you have a response? I'm a little confused.
I was just saying to Councilmember Zulich. I was, I was just saying to Councilmember Zulich that also, I'm just, I'm just here to, I'm just a liaison, you know, just passing on the information.
One of the four members.
Doing their good work, is what I'm saying.
Excellent. I have a question. So, in the report, it also reports on the projects that were funded for 2023. And it looks like the $50,000 that was appropriated for resident-led traffic calming was not spent last year. Do you know why that is, and does that carry forward, or?
Someone else might know that. I think it's because, I think it might be because the resident-led got taken up by staff-led, but I am not sure. Some of the council member might know the answer to that. We can ask the Planning and Transportation staff member about that.
Okay, great. Yeah, it's on page 50. There's a chart.
I know we talked about it in the meeting, but I, I just forget.
Okay, yeah, if you or maybe council staff can find out and let us know, and we can post an addendum also for the public benefit. Councilmember Stasburg, do you know by chance?
I, I watched that meeting recently in preparation for an upcoming Sidewalk Committee meeting, and I think it's because in that same chart, the Adams Street sidewalk, more was spent on that than anticipated. So, I think it sort of got rerouted into that. I think that that was what staff said about that, but.
Oh, interesting.
Yeah, because that's the only way that the bottom lines work out, right? Is to spend more on the Adams Street sidewalk and then nothing on the resident-led traffic calming. And I think that they had other budget money that accommodated all of the resident-led traffic calming needs.
Thank you, Councilmember Stasburg. Councilmember Rosenbarger, does that meet with, jive with your memory?
I still would want to check. I don't think, I don't think they would just take the money from resident-led traffic calming because it's allocated. So, it would have had to have been a decision also for a reason. And I, I mean, I don't think it would just be because Adams Street needed it because the resident-led is such a popular program. I do still wonder if it was because the resident-led got changed to staff-led, and then we had that extra money to spend on Adams. But.
We'll find out.
I'm happy to, I'm happy to.
Okay, that's great. Yeah, so we'll find out from Planning and Transportation and notify council. And as we discussed in previous weeks, we'll find a place to put that on the council website as well. All right, any other questions before we move on? So, we need a motion to approve this. Oh, yes, let's do public comment. Is there any member of the public who would like to comment on the report of the Sidewalk Committee and the recommended allocation of $120,000? Step right up, state your name, sign in. You know what to do.
My name is Steve Volin. I'm the former council member who served on the Traffic, on the Sidewalk Commission last year for all of one meeting. I just wanted to speak to why the budget was not all spent. I objected to the allocation of money to Overhill Drive, which was the bulk of the, the money proposed to be spent because I questioned whether or not it was necessary. That road is already very slow, very little traffic on it, and that perhaps a different method of allowing, making more provision for pedestrians and building actual sidewalk would be necessary there. So, I wanted to mention that and have the new Sidewalk Committee take that into account in future years. So, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Mr. Lucas, could you please make the announcement for anybody on Zoom?
Yes, if there are members of the public joining on Zoom that would like to speak on this report, please raise your hand or send a chat to the meeting host to let us know you'd like to comment.
Anybody else in council chambers wish to comment on this item? Do you see anybody on Zoom, Mr. Lucas? All right. Well, we'll come back to the council for a motion to approve.
I move to approve the Council Sidewalk Committee report and the partial funding recommendations regarding the 2024 Council Sidewalk funding.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any questions on the motion? Clerk Bolden, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Ruff?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Stasburg?
Yes.
Asari?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Rana?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
Nurala?
Yes.
All right, that motion passes 9-0, and we thank the 2023 Council Sidewalk Committee and all the staff members who were involved in assessing the sidewalk needs, and especially Councilmember Rosenbarger for the report. We will now move on to the next item on our agenda, which is a public comment on items that are not on the agenda. So, if anybody would like to make a public comment, they can approach the podium. And so, I see two people in motion here in council chambers. Anybody else in council chambers wish to make a comment? Could we see a show of hands? Okay, I don't see anybody else. Mr. Lucas, is there anybody on Zoom who would like to make a public comment?
I see one hand raised at the moment. And if there are others that would like to speak, please let us know by raising your hand in Zoom. You can find the raise hand button in your control bar under the reactions tab or the more tab. You can also send a chat to the host to let us know you'd like to speak, and we will recognize you that way. And I still, just one hand at the moment.
Seems we have three total, at least right now, so you'll have up to five minutes each. And if you're here in chambers, go ahead and sign in and state your name. You'll have up to five minutes.
Thank you, Madam President. This is Christopher M. G. from the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce. Good evening, council. I first want to just say thank you to, to Mr. Bruce on his work for the CIB. What's been pretty amazing, what they've done in forum meetings with the CIB in working to expand the Convention Center that's been taking incredibly a long time. And we've seen a little bit recently with, I don't want to say a rash, but a plethora of, of local eateries that have closed downtown. And where the Convention Center comes in is that Monday through Thursday crowd that we do not normally get. It's always disheartening when we see these small businesses close. There's a heart and soul that goes into starting and implementing and keeping these, these operations running. The one thing I wanted to comment tonight, I came back from Twin, Twin Lakes coaching basketball with my son, third grade, through the award-winning Parks Department here. And we lost last week, and we had to make some adjustments in our practice. We had to sort of change what we were focusing on. And I'm going to commend both the CIB and the mayor's office for doing that on the West Showers Building, getting the working group together, and then prioritizing those two fire stations and the other training center, I think, was the right, at this time, way to go. As probably many of you are aware, the chamber's been sort of pushing for much more physical transparency and budgetary restraint on this particular one. I mean, I was just doing the math today, and based on the creed funds not being used, which is $5 million, the sale that's not happening of the, the Third Street Police Department, that alone accounts to $8 million of the $10 million shortfall. So, I was even surprised it was, it was at $10, $10 million. I mean, it, it was a building that Mayor Thompson said was a, a building inside of a building is needed, and I called it a square hole for a round peg. And I think what we need to do is sort of look at, look at that sort of West Showers project with, with fresh eyes. And I think we're, we're heading, heading that way. And I appreciate everybody's patience and look forward to seeing some of these, these numbers in, in the coming weeks. I thank all of you for your time tonight. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person here in chambers?
Hello, excuse me, sorry. My name's Greg Alexander. I was sitting at home just now when I suddenly remembered a pedestrian's been killed recently, and that occasion's one of these speeches. I guess I should say I remembered who I am. So, I rushed my dinner, and I ran out the door, and here I am. I, I hate this. I don't know any way to get you to understand how much I hate this. I'd rather be at home eating dessert. I'd rather talk about the council sidewalk budget. But what happened two Saturdays ago is the council sidewalk budget. You know, it's always hard to nail down the details, but it looks like a woman was walking on South Walnut Street Pike when she was killed by a driver who then left, a hit-and-run. I can't tell, was she walking in the street or beside the street? I feel like someone might want to ask, why was she walking in the street? A reasonable person might wonder, right? Why would someone walk in the street there? I've been here 100 times to answer that question. I'm so tired. I, I've even specifically told you why someone would walk in that street right there. Two years ago, I stood at this podium, and I told you, listen, I'm literally repeating myself. People walk in the street on South Walnut Street Pike because there is housing. People live there, and if they can't afford a car, they walk. If they walk, they walk in the street because there are so many sidewalk gaps. The sidewalk switches from one side of the street to the other. You can cross, if you like crossing South Walnut Street Pike, or you can walk in the January mud, if you like walking in the January mud, or you can walk in the street. Those are their only options. That's it. That's why people walk in the street there. Two years ago, the Plan Commission approved housing in this sidewalk desert. And that prompted me to come here and stand right here and tell you what I just said two years ago. People are walking in the street on South Walnut Street Pike, and now one of them's dead. Why do I come to this body? What is the point? Should I have stayed home? Should I be opening up the ice cream? Am I, can someone explain it to me, why I'm here? I feel so pointless. I am literally wasting your time. I am sorry. We need sidewalks on both sides of every major street. But that debt is at least a $30 million liability. This budget asks staff to imagine failing to meet this need. So, I look at, like, Athan Jefferson. I have walked in the street there with my kids. It is an exceptionally bad location for being in a neighborhood so close to campus. It's a worthy project. I have looked at Dunn, that there are so many gaps, even after that one. There are so many, so many gaps. I've had bad experiences there, too. The need is acute. So many people walk there. It's severe. That's a worthy project, too. They're two worthy projects. But there were the projects out of a group of 100 worthy projects. We are still asking staff to imagine failing to meet this need. I'm wasting your time, and I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander. Next, we will go to the person on Zoom who would like to speak. Please give your name. You'll be unmuted. You'll, you can give your name, and then you'll have up to five minutes.
Good evening. I'm Sarah Ryder-Bann. It's hard to follow Greg Alexander and his passion, but I think that perhaps mine is a good segue because we're talking about money. And my question to the council this evening is, can anyone on council tell me how much money has been spent in the attempt to force county residents to become part of my city of Bloomington? I saw on B Square that tomorrow there is a hearing, once again, on the annexation. I suspect that the city of Bloomington has spent untoward amounts of money that perhaps could be spent on sidewalks within the city rather than forcing county residents who do not wish to be a part of the city of Bloomington to become a part of our city. I'm baffled that this is continuing, that despite the remonstrations by so many county residents, that the city of Bloomington continues to pound away at this issue and spend all of these dollars that could indeed be spent on very worthy projects within the city that will make the city of Bloomington the place I settled in 30 years ago and make it very attractive for those of us who live here and who want to live within the city. So, my question to council is, please, would you please look once again at this ridiculous effort for annexation of county property and tell all of us how much money has been wasted in this effort? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ryder-Bann. Did we have somebody else here in council chambers? Please come, come up to the podium. You'll have up to five minutes.
Steve Volin, I didn't mean to speak again, but I was reminded of something when Mr. M. G. spoke about the recent announcement about Showers West. I recall very vividly the debate we had in December of '22 about the bond and about how the bond should be spent. And I went out of my way to hold up the question of how the money should be spent to look in, more into the police unions' claim that it might be more advantageous to build in place than to move to Showers West. And we spent an extra month on that. One of the things I understood about the vote we had on the bond was that this was $30 million that the city was borrowing specifically to spend on public safety. If any significant portion of Showers West is devoted to something other than public safety, then I think it's incumbent upon the council to question and to investigate whether or not the bond was, is being inappropriately spent. Certainly, I know, and I know many people have been frustrated with other bonds asked for by the administration, the previous administration, that were not necessarily spent the way that the council expected them to. And I think this is one here now. Like, if Showers West is not going to become a police and fire station exclusively, then is that money that we approved for it being spent properly? So, I would ask you all to look into that. I, I don't quite know what the answer would be if you find that the money should somehow be clawed back because it's not being, I mean, the $8 million was spent on that building with the promise that it'd be used for public safety. So, if it's not going to be used for public safety, then I question why we approved the bond and what recourse we, and we should look into what recourse we have to change it. We, as a, I'm forgetting myself, you, I'm happy to be retired. Enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Volin. Any other public comment? Mr. Lucas, anybody else on Zoom?
No, not that I see.
Nobody else here in council chambers? All right, we will move on to the next part of agenda. Our agenda, which is appointments to boards and commissions. And I'd like to first start by making some appointments due to Councilmember Rana leaving us. She was appointed to a few committees of the council. And she will no longer be a member of council as of tomorrow. So, I would like to appoint to the Special Committee on Council Processes Councilmember Isaac Asare. And for the Jack Hopkins Social Service Funding Committee, Councilmember Rana was designated as chair of that committee. I would like to appoint Councilmember Asare to chair that committee. And Councilmember Rana was also a member of the Sidewalk Committee. I would like to appoint myself as an interim member of the Sidewalk Committee since we will have to meet again soon. And then, hopefully, when a new District 5 council member is selected, that person can take over that role. Councilmember Rana was also voted by this body to be our representative on the Metropolitan Planning Organization Policy Committee, the MPO. Planning Organization Policy Committee, the MPO. I believe Councilmember Flaherty has agreed to be the interim representative. So would somebody like to make a motion to nominate him as interim?
I'll make the motion to nominate Matt as the interim representative to the MPO.
All right. So any discussion or questions on that motion before we vote? Yes, Councilmember Flaherty.
Just that my acceptance is based on this being a temporary condition. But thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you willing to temporarily step in. Clerk Bolden, could you please call the roll on the interim appointment to the MPO?
Yes, Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yes.
Stasberg?
Yes.
Asari?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Rana?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
And Ruff?
Yes.
All right.
That motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Councilmember Flaherty. Next, we will move to recommendations from our interview committees. Do we have any motions for appointments or reappointments?
Yes, I have one motion for Team C. This is for to appoint Eugene Fred Schick to appointment to seat C1 of the Commission on the Status of Children and Youth.
All right. It's been moved and seconded to appoint Eugene Fred Schick to be to seat C1 of the Commission on the Status of Children and Youth. Are there any other recommendations from Team C? Councilmember Flaherty?
There are. If it's your preference, we can take them all at once. We had initially anticipated making separate motions for each commission, even when there may be multiple appointments. Okay.
That's fine. Okay. Clerk Bolden, could you please call the roll on the appointment of Fred Schick?
Yes, Councilmember San...
Before we call the roll, can I second what Councilmember Flaherty said, that they'd rather just read them all at once and we vote once?
Sorry. We... Madam Chair.
Councilmember Flaherty?
Happy to do that. I think that we were striking a middle ground between individual votes for each person versus all of them at once. Maybe just a reminder for all that we can separate the question, if needed, with respect to any individual appointment. And for that reason, perhaps we should do them all at once for Committee C.
Well, there was a motion on the table for one specific appointment. So why don't we go ahead and vote on that motion, and then we can proceed with the others together, if you would like to. Clerk Bolden, please go ahead.
Okay. Councilmember Stasberg?
Yes.
Asari?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Rana?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I can't hear Councilmember Rana?
Yes.
Thank you. Flaherty?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Stasberg?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. We thank those individuals, Mariela Arrendondo, Jimena Holguin, and Danora Sap, who will be serving on the Commission on Hispanic and Latino Affairs. And we thank Randy Cassidy and Deborah Meyerson, who will continue service on the Redevelopment Commission. Interview Team B. Do we have recommendations?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion for the Team B recommendations, including Eliza Carey to be appointed to seat C1 for the Commission on the Status of Women, Neil Gasswami to be appointed to seat C6 for the Environmental Commission, James Sanders to be reappointed to seat C2 for the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Birthday Celebration, and forgive me if I make a mispronunciation of the last name of Jason, either Michalik or Michalek, for reappointment to seat 2 on the Community Advisory on Public Safety Commission, CAPS.
Second. All right. Any questions or comments on those recommendations from Team B? Team C, I'm sorry, for the Commission on Hispanic and Latino Affairs and the Redevelopment Commission. All right. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Asari?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Rana?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Stasberg?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. We thank those individuals, Mariela Arrendondo, Jimena Holguin, and Danora Sap, who will be serving on the Commission on Hispanic and Latino Affairs. And we thank Randy Cassidy and Deborah Meyerson, who will continue service on the Redevelopment Commission. Interview Team B. Do we have recommendations?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion for the Team B recommendations, including Eliza Carey to be appointed to seat C1 for the Commission on the Status of Women, Neil Gasswami to be appointed to seat C6 for the Environmental Commission, James Sanders to be reappointed to seat C2 for the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Birthday Celebration, and, forgive me if I make a mispronunciation of the last name of Jason, either Michalik or Michalek, for reappointment to seat 2 on the Community Advisory on Public Safety Commission, CAPS.
Second. All right. Any questions or comments on those recommendations from Team B? All right. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Rana?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Zulik?
Bless you, yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Stasberg?
Yes.
And Asari?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we think we congratulate Eliza Carey for her reappointment to the Commission on the Status of Women, Jason Michalik on his reappointment to the CAPS Commission, Neil Gasswami on his appointment to the Environmental Commission, and James Sanders on his reappointment to the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Birthday Celebration Commission. Any other appointments, recommendations? All right. Seeing none, we will move on to legislation for first readings.
I move that ordinance 2024-01 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
It's been moved and seconded that ordinance 2024-01 be read by the clerk by title and synopsis only. Will the clerk please call the roll on this motion?
Councilmember Rana?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Stasberg?
Yes.
Asari?
Yes.
And Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. That motion passes. Will the clerk please read?
Yes, yes, yes. Ordnance 2024-01, to amend Title 12 of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Streets, Sidewalks, and Storm Sewers regarding amending various chapters to update references to the City Engineer, to update references to the Comprehensive Plan and Transportation Plan, to amend language about trees and vegetation in Chapter 12.24, and using this occasion to make typographical and grammatical updates. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance amends Title 12, Streets, Sidewalks, and Storm Sewers of the Bloomington Municipal Code, and comes forth at the request of city staff. The ordinance makes the following changes. It replaces references to the city's transportation and traffic engineer with city engineer. It capitalizes department names, for example, Department of Public Works, board and commission names, for example, Board of Public Works, and legal document names, Comprehensive Plan and Transportation Plan, et cetera. It removes references to his or her and replaces it with their. It removes references to the thoroughfare plan and its associated effective dates and replaces them with references to the transportation plan and its associated effective dates. It makes various other updates, including grammatical and typographical corrections, and revises Bloomington Municipal Code, Chapter 12.24, Trees and Flora, to add or amend standards for appropriate tree protection, update terminology, and add relevant definitions.
Thank you, Clerk Bolden. We now come to our second opportunity for public comment on items not on the agenda. Is there anyone in council chambers who would like to give a comment? Mr. Lucas, can you please make the announcement for anybody on Zoom?
Yes, if there are members of the public that wish to speak, please raise your hand to let us know. You can also send a chat to the meeting host, and we will recognize you that way.
Do we have any takers, Mr. Lucas?
Not seeing any takers on Zoom.
All right. We will move on to matters of council schedule, and I know that we have a special committee on council processes that will be held next Tuesday, February 13th, at 6:00 p.m. in the Hooker Conference Room. Any other scheduling items, Mr. Lucas?
No, I don't believe so.
Councilmember Asari?
Madam President, I motion to dispense with next week's meeting, and either to make that a space for us to do what the mayor said, have a special council meeting, or something similar.
We do have an item for second reading next week. How would you propose to?
Like, we... Then I'd motion that we suspend the rules and vote for that now.
All right. Is there a second for a motion to... Which motion do you have on the table now? Is it the one to cancel the meeting?
Well, if they have to go together, first would be motion to suspend the rules so that we can vote in favor of passing Title 12 of the Bloomington Municipal Code, ordinance 2024-01, today.
All right. Is there a second? All right. There's a motion and a second, and I would just want to say in response that we have nobody from the administration to present this ordinance to us this evening, because we were not expecting to deliberate on it. Councilmember Flaherty, you have a comment or question about the motion?
I believe the motion is not debatable.
Oh.
My hand was for a point of order, but I'm withdrawing it.
Is that right, Mr. Lucas? Is this motion not debatable?
Motions to suspend the rules are not. However, I'll just note that to adopt an ordinance, this ordinance tonight, it would require unanimous consent of the council to take it up for consideration, along with a two-thirds vote to adopt it. I take Councilmember Asari's motion to be a motion to suspend the rules to allow the council to consider it for a second reading at this point on the agenda. So if this motion to suspend the rules were to pass, a motion to introduce this item for a second reading would need to be made. That would require unanimous consent of the council.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lucas, for clarifying that. Well, then, let us have a vote on the motion to suspend the rules. Clerk Bolden, could you please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
No.
Stasberg?
No.
Asari?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
No.
Rana?
That came through. It was a yes that came through.
Thank you.
So that motion passes 6-3, but I believe it needed to be unanimous? Is that correct?
Well, at this point, a motion to introduce could be made. Again, I take the motion to suspend the rules to allow the council to essentially add opportunity for second readings at this point on the agenda. On the alternative, if you'd like to take that as an indication of who would like to introduce this item and not make that motion, that might make sense as well.
I do not understand.
So the motion that was just made is fine because it passed by the majority, but the motion to introduce it for second reading would have to be unanimous passing. So the fact that there were some no's probably indicates that those people would also vote no on introducing it. So then that would not pass unanimously, and so it could not be introduced for second reading. Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you, parliamentarian.
Am I right?
Yes.
Thank you both. So are there any other motions at this time? All right. Seeing none, that concludes our business for the evening. So let us adjourn.